All right, good morning, everybody. It's a little past eight thirty and we'll call this morning's meeting to order. First item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes from July twenty-fifth and August first.
Move approving.
A motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is a request for a letter of support for the Lotus Center, which is an outpatient CD treatment program. And Rhonda and Pat Boyer are here and it looks like they've brought some guests along.
They do. I had our guests in the center.
Good morning to you all. Rhonda, I'm assuming you want to start us off?
Okay, I'll start us off. So what we have is, we have three guests and I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their background and the program that they would like to develop here in Clay County. Overall, they're looking to provide outpatient chemical health treatment for folks in our county. We do have one other outpatient clinic here in our county offered through Anchorage. We used to, in the past, have additional outpatient providers. I want to say, Pat, do you recall how long ago it was that, was it First Step that was in our building or Drake? It's been so long ago.
Sharehouse.
Sharehouse. All right. Sharehouse operated an outpatient program in our building years ago. They currently operate in Fargo, North Dakota. So folks from our county can access outpatient chemical health treatment in North Dakota as well. So we have organizations like Sharehouse, Drake Counseling, First Step, those organizations. But they are looking to provide services here in Clay County. Our agency does have a history with some of these folks and particularly Randy as a provider in one of the current outpatient programs. But it looks like they are looking to split up and start their own program. So the rule does require, when they apply for a license through the state of Minnesota, the rule does require that they come to the county, talk about what they would like to do and what they would like to provide. And the county, as a part of that application process, could supply a letter indicating that we concur that there is a need for the program in our county and would support them moving forward in the application process. Or if we do not feel there is a need or if there's other circumstances that would warrant us to not approve or not concur with their plan, we can provide that to the Department of Human Services as well. So just to clarify, they are not, this is not a medication-assisted opioid program that we've been talking about in the past. This is completely different and separate from those conversations, so.
Okay.
Okay. So maybe we'll turn it over to you guys and let you talk a little bit about your organization and what you hope to do.
As you begin too, if you can make sure you speak good into your mic there too, okay? All right. Very good, thank you.
My name is Sarah Schadling-Gress. I am the program director for the Lotus Center LLC. And my experience is that I have worked the last seven years in chemical dependency. There's a house supervisor and I have personal experience as well with chemical dependency. And I've been involved in some of the public, I do a lot of public speaking around the country as well for chemical dependency. So I've had some experience with other facilities in other states and some of their success rates, including Austin, Texas, and California.
Hi.
Good morning.
My name is Joe Moran and I too have had a few years in the recovery facilities around here. I was case managing for a while at, well, I met Randy, actually. And as well as Sarah, I too am in long-term recovery myself and I have a lot of personal experience. And I think that's kind of what the passion for this stems from, for us, is because we can relate so well to the people that are coming in and looking for help and just being able to understand, you know. And I think with what we're doing, we're looking to do is, it's compassionate care, you know, harm reduction type facility. So, so many times when we have a person.
Oh, who's our other person?
Our other counselor. So many times when somebody is in treatment and, you know, if you just look at the statistics, I mean, it's not at all uncommon for somebody, especially in early recovery, to have a slip, you know, or to, you know, to relapse, basically. And so many times what happens is the people will then, you know, just kind of say, well, you know, we need to let you go or discharge you. And our goal is to kind of meet the client where they're at, not advocating for using by any means, but instead of, you know, if that happens, let's readjust your programming and see what we can do instead to help get you to that point in your life where you can go out and be successful. You know, Lotus means rebirth and I think that's kind of what we're looking to do is just trying to, trying to get out in the community. And we spend a lot of time kind of in the trenches, so to speak, you know. And like I said, it stems a lot for us from just our personal stories and, yeah. Anything else? Oh, I was just supposed to introduce myself. I'm Joe. Went back from the record. I'm a talker, sorry.
I'm Elizabeth Nelson, you can call me Beth.
I am an LA DC and an LPC. I will be one of the counselors here that hopefully will be doing treatment during the day at some point, but we're just going to start with the evening. Other than that, that's pretty much my basic introduction for now. We'll go into more later.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Roland Stetson and I go by Randy as my nickname. And just so you all know, I wear a hearing aid, so I lip read as well, so I'm not staring at you. Just clarifying. So I'm also a LA DC licensed addiction counselor for Minnesota. I typically do outpatient, chemical health services, intensive outpatient, relapse prevention. I call it recovery enhancement group instead of relapse. And then I volunteer a lot of my time in the recovery community as well, sort of the smart recovery community.
Do you want to talk about what you intend to provide at the Lotus Center?
Yes, I can go into this. And actually, I made some brochures. I have a few of them out here if anybody would like to take a look at them. We also have an outline for one of our, one of the things we'll be doing is a DUI seminar and I do have an outline here for anybody who's interested in the outline for DUI seminar. So, kind of like Joe was going into, the Lotus Center, I will be providing intensive outpatient services as well as a recovery enhancement group. One of the things that we're planning on doing is actually setting up a system that allows people to have a, an affordable way of getting treatment. There's a lot of people who either have insurance or they can't, or they just don't and they can't receive. In our personal experience with, you know, in the recovery community, a lot of people who are just kind of stuck in the middle, we can't get some services right away when they need them. And one of the ways we were going to provide this is by allowing them a sliding scale on some of the services, even our outpatient group. And by providing this, we would actually have them, if they were completely unable to pay anything, we would actually have them go and provide volunteer services at other community places such as churches, Salvation Army, hand them, sign a voucher and bring it back so they could get those services. And we would have a case manager working with them at the same time, getting them employment or, you know, helping them get hooked up with like consolidated funding or whatnot and then continue their care to a point on. I am a big advocate for restorative justice. It's a program that's being pushed through the college and finishing schooling with. It allows people who have maybe done some things in the community that they're not proud of or that they need to, in some way, I don't make amends for, and we want to give them that opportunity through volunteer work as well. So that was one of the things that we were going to provide is okay to get these people who are kind of falling through the cracks in the middle right now. Usually when they need services, they kind of needed them right now and there's just this wait and we'd like to be able to give them that opportunity. We are able, we are planning on giving, providing assessments such as chemical dependency assessments, DUI assessments, the seminars, the treatment services. Eventually, we're hoping to, because we do see it as a family issue, that chemical dependency is not a problem with just an individual. There is a lot of things that go into chemical dependency. We want to provide family therapy at some point. Right now, because we don't have a licensure for it, we have somebody who's working on it. We can do family support groups. Eventually, I would like to get into grief and loss counseling because I think it's very important with chemical dependency that somebody addresses trauma, grief and loss. We would be providing groups like that as well. And one of the big things that we have on top of all of this, that's a little different than some of the other facilities, is that we are going and filing for a nonprofit status as well because we would like to open up something called, we like to call it Rat Park. There is a study that was done in the seventies that proves that, and you can look into it if you're interested, about if they essentially put rats into a cage with one option of drinking water that was drug-free and then water that also was laced with drugs. And they showed that most of the rats would eventually use the water with drugs so much they would overdose and die. And then a researcher.
Those are in isolation.
In isolation. And then one of the researchers, several years later, was like, well, they had nothing else to do, so they built something called Rat Park. And ironically, I mean, interestingly enough, none of the rats used the drug-laced water. They eventually started just living their lives and using the regular water. And the sense, the theory is, is that if you give them purpose and you give them things to do, if you empower an individual, they will choose other options than drugs. And so we hope to, with our nonprofit, fund a rep center that would, we already have support groups running right now. We have a women's empowerment group, we have free yoga, we have a, we're trying to set up a, actually, an MAT support group for people who are on medication-assisted therapy so they can actually discuss things. We have a LBGT Coda meeting that I'll be starting up. And, am I missing things? Oh, we do have a twelve-step recovery community that's involved and Smart Recovery also using our facility right now. The big thing is what we're trying to do is make everything accessible in one spot instead of having everything separated. And there's a big importance with that networking.
At some point too, we'd like to add the mental health aspect, not just the chemical dependency.
Right.
That was my question. Pat, as we have developed the Behavioral Health Subcommittee for a jail, the chemical dependency piece is a piece that we've talked about may be happening within the first year of operation. Do you feel that some of the services that the Lotus Center would be offering could be connected into that jail behavioral health pod?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. I think we would probably have to do like an RFP or something.
Right, but I mean, those are, some of these services that they're talking about are services that we've been identifying that really aren't a community-based offering currently, right?
Yeah, or limited, yeah.
If I may comment, one of my areas of knowledge is I do a lot of cognitive behavioral therapy type work. And so a lot of the prisons, people get cognitive therapy, some training. When they come back to the community, there's a whole lot of support in cognitive. So that's where SMART comes in handy. There is a program called Inside Out that is geared specifically for like probation, jails and things like that, that can be facilitated as a support group that provides that cognitive behavior support.
Thank you.
Say if that's something you guys are looking to do already, we are more than happy to coordinate care and collaborate with other agencies and different people within the community as well. We're more than happy to do that because we feel it's a community issue and as a community we should all be on the same page and work together as well.
We want to be able to network as many services as possible in helping everyone. I think the more connected we are, the more beneficial we are going to be for individuals as they're seeking it. And as we were discussing with compassionate care, this harm reduction, I know it's a new concept, but it's proving to be very successful about the fact that there's some people who are just chronic addicts or alcoholics. And, you know, if you get someone who is a heroin addict that may occasionally be slipping and using, you know, THC or something like that, it's not a time to let go of all their support networks. It's a time to reevaluate their situation, see if there's something they're lacking, commend them on the fact that they're not using the drugs they were before and maybe they're still employed or maybe they're still in school and carry on and, you know, continue to help them in finding a new direction in their life, a new purpose.
I see that you have an address listed. Is that the address that you will be operating out?
We're currently at that address.
Currently there.
Yep.
And everything will be located there?
For now. Depending on how fast things grow, we will find another facility at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, it all depends.
We're a little smaller, you know.
Exactly. It all depends on the services that we're able to provide that the community wants.
But you're committed to Clay County?
Yes.
Oh, baby steps.
Yes.
Can you talk about where you're at in the licensing process with the Department of Human Services?
Yes, the policy and procedure manual is completed. We are waiting to send that into the state. We're working on the application right now. We are getting the funds for the five hundred dollar fee to send in. As soon as we get all that, it'll be sent in, hopefully by the end of this month, actually. We've been in contact with DHS for the past couple of months as well.
So the Department of Human Services really decides on the licensing and issues the license and develops the contract with the Lotus Center, not the county. So the county's role in that process is really hearing about the services that are intended to be offered, serving as a referral based to the agency if individuals want to receive their services there, and then supplying that statement of our position for their program.
So you're currently operating in that location now?
We're, yeah, limited services as of right now. The things that we're capable of doing, which is like a deep, we can do some like chemical dependency assessments. There's two, well, actually, all of us can do Rule 25 assessments. And then another thing is, is that we have a room that we are providing to any community support groups right now. So, and we're getting a lot of use out of it, actually.
Oh, to be starting the DUI seminar next month, I think is what we're looking to schedule our first one for that.
So we're trying to do everything to the T dot, our I's and crossing our Ts and making sure we're getting, following everything as it is supposed to be done.
So once, once you would have this license and you start to meet these, do people just walk in there or is it, is it, do they make appointments to see counselors or how does that operation going to work?
I mean, we have a, we have a phone that we ask people to call, you know, if they're scheduling a Rule 25 assessment, we do have a phone number and there's somebody that usually is able to answer that. If not, the emails go directly, or the voicemails go directly to our emails so we're able to get in touch with them within, you know.
A few hours.
Yeah, if that even. After they call, I was contacted by somebody last night, actually, and I haven't talked to you yet, but I just kind of about getting some Rule 25s done and I, you know, kind of that process, I think, is once we're able to, you know, move forward with this, kind of having like a full-time person that's available to do that type of thing, you know, as far as, you know, taking the phone calls and scheduling and stuff like that. But right now, under limited resources, we're just doing things the best we can and it's working pretty well.
When the license goes through and we actually are able to do treatment per the state that, you know, that's what the license comes through for, Randy will be the one that's going to be doing the full-time treatment at that point in the evening hours. And then, so he would be there to answer some phone calls and do referrals at that point. And then like Joe was saying, we'd get some, you know, part-time, full-time staff there to help answer the phones and whatnot too. So ideally, we would want people to call in, refer from the county, refer from other agencies and then that's how they would probably get in. If they wanted to come in off the streets, that might be an option that we can look into. We're not opposed to that, but we would have to downmake a plan for that too.
I'll be working during the daytime doing, what, schedule of assessments or one-on-ones and things like that, going to do programming in the evening, which is kind of typical for outpatient.
Commissioner Groth.
Yeah, I guess you answered my question. I just wanted, if people are referred to you by the court system or that, I mean, the courts are aware that you're there, they refer people to you or?
We're in the process of working on it.
Yeah. There's, it seems like our name is getting out more and more and we're getting more contact from, from different areas and facilities and stuff. It's kind of interesting where I'm getting referrals from already, there's some of them that are even.
Word of mouth to travel pretty fast around here.
I was actually approached on Saturday by a reporter for KBRR asking if he could, if we'd be interested in doing an on-camera interview about what we're working on and everything. So word is getting out about us.
It is. Our plan for moving forward too is that once we actually get licensed, we can do an open house and we can invite probation officers, county workers, we can invite other people from other agencies to come in and know what we're all about. That way we can get more referrals from that.
And I have a pretty good ongoing relationship with Lake County Social Service with the Chemical Health Unit as well as local POs and so, I know several of them from seven years.
One of the things we wanted to do too was set up a monthly, we don't know exactly what we would call it, but maybe like ask an addict, which is open to any family members and friends who are interested and kind of do some advertising for it. So anybody who's interested in the community and finding, you know, and then have maybe a panel of people who are maybe long-term recovering addicts, some people in the profession so that they can come in and ask questions and find out what the program's about, what addiction's about, what their options are for loved ones, neighbors, friends, other people in the community. So a little bit of outreach as well.
And we did have these folks meet with our chemical health staff as well and Pat and I were a part of that. And a couple of the pieces that lend us to support having an additional option is, again, we do have one outpatient program here in Clay County, the rest are located in Fargo. And so transportation can become an issue for folks that we refer. So we like that option of having an additional resource right in our community. The second piece that I heard from our chemical health workers, and Pat can reiterate this as well, is having the different treatment modalities is important for the folks that we refer. The twelve-step model in addition to the other models that they intend to implement that are really best practice and research-based is important as well. So we like that as an option. Thirdly, our staff have worked closely with a number of these folks and particularly Randy and have received good feedback from folks that we've referred to Randy and we know that they would offer a good treatment program and option for our folks.
I suggest to ask that a little bit, working within the field thus far, a lot of the agencies are abstinence-based, like we, you know, we kind of want to go, not go against that, but offer a different perspective. And I know, working in the field, that's an area that it can be quite difficult because a lot of agencies currently are like, no, if you use, you got to get out of treatment. No, you can't be here. And that's definitely not what we want to promote. We want to help them know what's going on.
This is another thing they're taking into consideration is that one of the things that we're running into working in the field is that, and some of the studies are proving that outpatient with sober housing is proving to have a much higher success rate right now. I mean, I don't know if that's a trend that's developing, but I know in some of the trainings I went to, that was discussed. I think it's just keeping them in their, you know, in a more natural environment and working on themselves while they're also doing, you know, doing their living skills and doing treatment at the same time or developing that community, support community on the outside. It also has a lot to do with funding. I think that there's, the expenses that are found in residential treatment are really, I mean, they can be quite.
High.
High.
Very high, yes.
And even with insurance companies, they're starting to kind of cut down on how long they're willing to fund people. And outpatient is becoming more of a attractive, or maybe that's not the best word, option in comparison to a residential treatment facility just for cost reasons, so.
So you mentioned that you were going to establish some sort of a sliding scale thing for, so I'm assuming that once licensed that some of these folks who might have insurance, there would be some insurance that will cover.
Correct. What we have to do is.
Because somehow you have to get your revenue from someplace.
Correct. Yep. So what we have to do is we have to make contracts with insurance companies. And once we do that, then we're in network with them, is what it's called, and then we can build their insurance. So ideally, insurance would be great if they don't have it, though we would implement the sliding scale fee.
In addition to that, the Chemical Dependency Consolidated Fund, which is through the county. So for individuals who are low income or have no coverage and qualify for that fund, those referrals would still come to the county, the worker would assess those needs and could make referrals. And so then that fund may be an option as well, so.
Is that a limited resources there?
It is not, but the county does have a share to that. So generally, for outpatient, our share is about fifteen percent of the cost. And we do have that budgeted. So we won't be anticipating any new funds requested into that budget line for this program. And, you know, we do recognize this is the first year hearing about this program and this request for development. So if the board desires more information, we can certainly come back if there's additional questions that you want to vet through before approving. But what happened is if you approved a letter of support, I would draft that letter and send it to the Department of Human Services or for them to send.
Well, you know, I think the, you know, from the standpoint of the county board and what our responsibility is in this is to answer to the state whether there's a need or not for this. And clearly, clearly in my mind, there's a, based on the amount of people going in and out of our facilities, that there is a need for additional help on chemical dependency and that type of thing, so. I don't know where the board would like to go on.
You guys are good with this? I'll make the motion for the letter of support.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just, just to comment, I think all of us in this room are aware of the challenges that addiction raises for counties and cities and specifically, as you're talking about residential treatment and how expensive that is, we're very aware of that, some of our different programs. So I am really encouraged to have an outpatient option for, for people in the area. And so I just, I wish you the best and hope that you're successful and, you know, quite frankly, if we can save just a handful of lives by services that you offer, I think a letter of support is a small step to that.
All right, any other comments? Very good. Seeing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Good luck with your licensing process. I want you to come back to us and update us once in a while on how things are going.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is a budget review for 2018 with the Lake Agassiz Regional Library. I think I saw Liz come in. Good morning.
Nice to see you all again. You do have some handouts, if that's all right.
Sure.
Take one down and pass it around. Well, thanks for, um, inviting me back again. A lot has happened in Lake Agassiz Regional Library since I was here last year. Um, last fall, we were the fortunate recipients of a federal grant for about $10,000. It was administered to us through the Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Education, to, um, implement a new program across our seven counties called, um, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. And the program is simply that we encourage parents and caregivers to read 1,000 books to a child before they enter kindergarten, with the idea that this will prepare them for kindergarten, or it's a kindergarten readiness program. And it really helps with the development of the brain, and it really helps to prepare kindergarten, or youth for kindergarten. This program has been such a huge success across our entire region, but also here in Clay County. One reason is because we've developed really great partnerships with, um, different county agencies. And here in Clay County, we've worked closely with the Clay County Nurse Family Partnership and WIC, and they've really helped us get this program into the hands of those who need the program the most. So we have been very thankful to have these partnerships. Also, in the handouts that I gave you, you'll see that there's a little, um, handout regarding Laurel Mobile. We did launch an app this year. The, um, first day that we launched the app, we had over a thousand people download it, and we've had thousands of people download the app since. And we, um, the statistics of the number of people who are using this app around the region is mind-boggling. Um, it's used to download eBooks and e-audio books als-, from mobile devices. It's also used, um, to manage your library accounts. So we're pretty excited about that. Also, this past year, we were, again, the fortunate recipients of legacy funds for the next two years from the state legislature, and that's what is represented in this fall brochure. So these are events that are made free to the public through the legacy funding through the state of Minnesota. So, um, we're excited about this as well. The only bit of, um, unfortunate news that I have today is that when I was here last year, I talked about how libraries across the state of Minnesota were really going to push, um, the legislature to change the formula that's used to allocate funds to regional library systems. Um, the current formula is not doing rural library systems or any library systems any favor. It's heavily weighted on adjusted net tax capacity per capita and population. And they say you have rich farmland and lake property in your region, and you have a little bit of population, um, and so we receive, well, we received decreases in funding from the state every year since 2009. Um, we will be going back to the legislature, not this year, but the following year, to fight again for this formula change, because this is something that we really want to move forward. We do not like coming to our signatories and asking for big increases, which is why this year, we have asked for the 1.5 overall increase to our operating budget. Um, do any of you have any questions about the budget for 2018?
I see we've got kind of the, um, breakdown of it here. Brian handed out to us here.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, on the backside of that, which was not included in your packet, that's where I handed this out, shows the various counties and cities and their contributions to this regional...
Yeah, that's what she did. She gave us that. I guess she...
Oh, she did.
Yes, she gave us both of them, I guess, yeah. So on your, um, personnel item, are you looking at adding somebody, or?
No. We are a member of a union, and so it does include increases for employees.
How many, how many staff do you have?
We employ about 90 individuals, but it's about 40 full-time employees.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you for the update. And we'll, we'll be notifying you about, uh, our final, um, preliminary budget stuff in, uh, by the middle of September.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our, uh, budget review with the Historical Society.
I don't think...
Oh, no, excuse me. Yeah.
You know, I know...
She's not, she's not...
I know Marines' mother died, uh, yesterday.
Oh, okay. I wonder if, uh, I wonder if maybe we can just, um, do you have something on it?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, and yes, uh, she didn't know she'd be able to make it or not. She didn't notify us, but that's fine. Uh, there's just a letter here on it. Uh, you do a, a line item, I guess, appropriation to the Historical Society, and frankly, um, she did, was just here to give an update when, uh, Mr. Peel had his war.
Right.
They did an update at that time, and that's mainly kind of what it is. We can certainly respect it the way you'd like.
This is the same thing that's in our packet, right?
So I'm just reading that they're, uh, requesting a 1% increase in 2018, correct?
That is correct.
And I know they've got a lot of, um, that St. John's Bible that they're bringing in this fall, and it's really going to be a big thing for the Historical Society, to bring a lot of people in there. Uh, they've got some, the attendance is up this year on them, and, um, you're doing a good, good job there, isn't it?
Okay, I think, you know, I don't know, Brian, that we, um, unless one of the commissioners would like to see her come, I think we've, with their recent update with this, I think we can just, um, put that in the process for us to decide.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We'll move it to our next item, and that is the 2018 review of the budget for probation. Janelle is here.
And, Mr. Chair, that'd be on page 39 of the packet that I handed out.
Thank you. Good morning, Janelle.
How are you guys? Good. I did bring a handout just to kind of, um, highlight or itemize some of what I'll go over this morning. I think for the most part, our budget remains somewhat consistent. Um, we'll see some increases with salary. Um, what I kind of tried to outline for some is that our office does contain county employees as well as contracted employees. They're contracted with the state of Minnesota. So you'll kind of see the top part of what I just handed out identifies county employees. Um, and so they, their salaries would associate with, uh, agreed-upon increases and, and steps. Um, and then, to highlight a little bit, one of the things with our budget that is, that remains a concern is our reentry program. Um, we've come before the board a few times to update, um, request funding. This board has, um, assisted in funding this program and, and some positions within that program. Over the years, um, this Clay County program has been available to us since 2003. It's been sustained from various grants over the years. We did have some grants that were not renewed. We continue to seek grant funding. And so within our budget, moving into 2018, there is still some concern. Um, we were able to secure $31,000 from the collaborative grant. Um, we are still in the process. We'll apply for the OJP grant that, um, is due in October, September, but that doesn't cover anything until fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019. So we're still looking for additional funds to maintain the one staff that we, um, have continued to work with in the reentry program. Part of that is, um, we have tried to collaborate and worked closely with Rhonda Porter from Social Services. We're kind of looking at how this position could also, um, meet the needs related to truancy, um, things that are mandated through statute, addressing truancy at that upper age level through the alternative school. Um, our reentry staff currently works with a lot of those kids already. Um, we did recently, uh, relocate this staff. We were renting space, uh, where the alternative school used to be. We ended that lease and moved her into our department currently. Um, if we are able to move forward and if this position is able to work, um, with truancy somewhat, we hope to base this position out of the alternative school, um, if the school supports that. So, right now, we're still trying to secure funding, and then we would approach the school about that as well. So that's kind of, I don't have a lot of concrete information about that program as of yet. Still working on that. Um, down below, you'll see the contracted positions with the state of Minnesota. Um, kind of isolates out what the salary is, what the fringe benefits would be, and what the, the total amount would be. Um, currently, the counties are reimbursed at a rate of 29.82% um, for those salaries. I think the state is looking at a 2% increase in salary.
So, so these people that we contract with, their cost of living adjustment is based on the state's rate, not the county's rate?
Correct. Yeah. And so that kind of covers, um, staffing, and I don't see, I, I don't believe that there were a lot of increases in the rest of the budget. One area that I did request an increase in was telephones. Um, I am looking at upgrading staff cell, or staff phones to cell or smartphones. Um, currently, our agents that go out in the field do not have smartphones, and, um, if they had smartphones, they would be able to access their calendars, emails, be more accessible. They also would be able to access, um, our database, that would give offender addresses, um, any alerts, those kind of things when they're out in the field. And so that is one area that I have requested additional funds be placed into that. Um, I'm trying to work with the county IT to establish if it would be best to go through the county for those, or to, for the state to purchase those, and then somehow, um, look for reimbursement for that. Um, there is a concern with, um, our cell phones, state cell phones, uh, are, we're not able to use those for personal use. They're, um, able to be shut down at any time by the state because the offender database is maintained on that phone. And so it may be more beneficial if we're going to put our database on it, um, that it would be through the state. But again, I've approached county IT, and, um, they would be able to determine how we approach that. Um, another area that I just wanted to highlight, and you'll see on your sheet, is, as there's discussions about, um, the juvenile detention facility expanding, um, I believe that that will impact us and our location. And so the county contract office, as well as the felony probation office, will need to look at relocating. We do hope to stay on campus. Um, we are looking in, in discussions about what might be available. Um, but that, too, will be in, in fiscal year 18. There may be some relocation fees, renovation fees, um, if there is, you know, whatever is available, um, costs associated with that. And that's kind of an unknown at this time.
Okay.
A lot to digest.
Yes. Brian, do you have that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just may add that if you are looking on your page 39, your, um, your expenses, you'll notice down in the bottom line for 2018 request are down about, uh, oh, I think roughly $108,000, $105,000. The expenses are down about $105,000. And your revenue, if you look up on top and you compare it to the 2017 compared to the 2018 requested, is down about $108,000. So they're, they're about flat, is, is my point in the matter. Um, there's, and because of that reentry, the dollars went down on the revenue and the, on the expenditures went down as well. So, um, and she, she pointed it out that we have a real concern with the, with these office space, and that's one of the items that you established, uh, or extended that, um, Campbell's Improvement Committee to include the, looking at the family service center, uh, space and things. So that would be included in that as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And that, uh, but that, um, the likelihood of that move probably would not happen in 18, you know, if that were to...
Well, Mr. Chair, it, they have been, uh, they've been talking about this for quite a while, that they need some additional...
Oh, okay.
...security issues, and, and, uh, so where they're going to land is kind of important on their, on their bucket list, I think, for 2018, at least for a decision to be made.
It's my understanding that, um, there's also a timeline with breaking ground or renovating the space that we're currently in. I, I wouldn't say we're in a, um, crisis that we need to. It's my understanding that the space that we're in right now may be desired soon.
Yeah, under, yeah.
And, and knowing that we would have to move staff and function, even if we have to move temporarily, we, we need to plan for that.
Sure.
So even if it's 2019...
Yeah.
And that may be the case. Um, right now, the felony office did hire, um, a new position, and so we are busting at the seams. Um, we, we have one additional staff that does not have office space that we would be looking at sharing. Um...
Well, I, I think it's good if there's, if that's being reviewed for other areas within the family service center. That's, uh, that's great. But I just don't know to the extent that, um, 2018 is when, if we do a renovation of that facility, that you'd have to be out that early in 18 anyway. That's my point. We're, we're a ways from getting there, so...
Okay.
But I'm glad it's being looked at, so... Any other comments from... Okay, thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, good morning. We're getting a budget review now on, um, Public Health Department.
And, yes, and, Mr. Chair, if you'll go to your, she's going to hand out, I think, a handout, but if you go to your final page, it's kind of a summary for public health. Public Health does not use the same type of software as the rest of the county, uh, each champ's or champ's...
No, well...
So it doesn't, it doesn't get included in the printout. You know, it's such a voluminous document. It's about 50 pages, so there's a summary in the back, and then plus they have a prepared summary for you.
Okay.
It's probably, oh, and I'm, sorry, I'll introduce Mary Fromm. She's our financial manager, so those of you who don't remember Mary.
Good morning, Mary.
Good morning.
So if you look at, if you look at the summary page that Mary just handed out, that probably will be helpful in, and, uh, because our, I know our public health budget gets to be kind of complicated with the number of programs, grants, et cetera. But if you look at the bottom of that public health, uh, budget recap, it, it shows from 2016, 2017, and 2018, uh, the very bottom grid of what our requests have been. And that's at the bottom of this, um, page.
Okay.
So, um, you can see it's been fairly consistent, and from 2017 to 2018, there is not significant changes with...
So those, those are the...
Our requests for, uh...
Levy dollars.
Correct.
So, so it would be expenditures over revenues. So, so it would be expenditures over revenues and then what you need from the county.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, and then if you just wanna go through, we can walk through the summary page, and then if you have specific questions, because it's really, it's pretty detailed in our budget. And Lori can pick in if there's anything that, that we need to talk about. So as we look at the top, it's just our, we're just doing the recap of the revenue changes. And then the next column is our expenditure changes. So, and we broke it out with our main program areas. So our infrastructure area, you can see the net change from 2017 to 2018. Our state and federal grant revenue changes, so $192,000 to $200,000. And let's see, Mary, I think for Commissioner Haney, just that back page kinda shows our, our grid of our funding sources. We have multiple funding sources with our grants, contracts, et cetera. So, kind of a, kind of just a quick snapshot of all of the sources that public health has. So we have state and federal grants, so that's the change there. And our professional and self-pay, we have a number of areas with our professional services. But Mary does provide financial oversight for our community health board, so that's our four counties, Clay, Ottertail, Wilken, and Beckett, as well as providing financial help with Ottertail's public health services. So, they pay for those services. So we receive the revenue for the time that Mary spends with that Ottertail work. We have the immunizations, the flu, and disease prevention and control is DPNC. So we have some changes in, just a little increase in our state and federal grants for that. Insurance reimbursement, we have, we have a decrease in, in some of our rate, insurance reimbursement. And our professional and self-pay, just a little-
So, so why do you, why do you, why does that decrease by that, that much? Is that, was that a trend that you saw in 2017 that would?
That we had a decrease, yes.
Because you're projecting, you know, $80, $200 less than-
We've got a decrease in the number of flu shots that we're giving out. And it's because of the trend within the community, public health does less and less of that every year.
They're going to other sources.
We provide the ones that really can't get to other sources. So we've, we've found that niche, but there's multiple places that provide flu vaccine.
Right.
So as the, as the community has multiple sites, then we can reduce the amount that we have to provide. So we just do the ones that are really, you know, that can't get to other sources.
Oh, wouldn't that be a good thing to have, huh? We don't give out as many flu, I mean, did they go to other places or?
Sure. Many go to their health providers. There's also, you know, the Ascension Sanford provide community flu clinics and-
Even the pharmacies do it.
Yeah, and the pharmacies do it as well.
Yeah. You could get it just-
Right. So it's, it's quite a, I mean, we do, we still do employees, and we still have a few groups that want us to come to their facilities to provide that.
Okay, right.
The next area, the EMS CPR, public health does provide CPR to, we have two trained people that provide the CPR and first aid training, and we do it for the juvenile detention center. We do it for public health for the detox. And the safety committee has now requested that we provide the CPR training to that group every couple of years. So, so that's what we provide for CPR. Clinic services, we have, we provide a variety of clinic services, and you can see that the revenue is, is down a little bit. But we also have like a hepatitis, perinatal hepatitis B. We have contracts for, for that, as well as refugee health. So those are contracts that come into the clinic services.
This is also, this also includes all of the drug screenings that we do for, for social services-
Yeah.
-within the county.
Yeah, they contract for us to do the drug screening for their clients, and then they pay, they reimburse us for those drug services that we do.
Okay.
Any questions in that area? Family health visiting, we have our two evidence-based programs that the state recognizes. That's the Healthy Families America and our Nurse Family Partnership. So those are our outcome-based home visiting programs. And we, we did have a maternal infant early childhood grant, home visiting program grant that we are working with Ottertail, Becker, Polk, Norman, and Menominee counties. So we received funding, so we have additional funding for our home visiting programs there.
So is that why the $59,000 shows up there?
Correct, yeah. So we were fortunate to receive that home visiting grant. And then insurance reimbursements, we do still receive insurance reimbursement for our home visiting programs. The school nursing, the next one, we added, as you know, the Holly School. So we have a contract now for, for that additional Holly School. And all of those school contracts, the, the school is reimbursing for the nurse time there. We do child and teen checkup screening, that's the next area. And as we do those screenings, it's zero through 21, yeah, about three months through 21, and we receive insurance reimbursements for that. We do the child and teen checkup screenings also in the juvenile detention center. We provide those for Minnesota and North Dakota kids, the North Dakota kids. The reimbursement is much less than the Minnesota reimbursement, so. The case management services is our next area, and those are a number of different programs that we are contracting with the health plans and DHS. And so we receive reimbursement for the case management services that we do there.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Going back to those child and teen checkups, do we give, surely Fargo-Cass public health offers those?
Their social, their social services area does. The Fargo-Cass public health doesn't do those child and teen checkups.
Oh.
So-
But they are offered in North Dakota, right?
Correct.
And I guess my just question is, do we give priority to the Minnesota residents because the Minnesota reimbursement is better?
We, oh, for the juvenile detention center, we have to screen, that's just for the juvenile detention.
Juvenile, I got you.
Yeah. So we have to screen all of the kids, North Dakota, Minnesota.
Gotcha.
And the case management services, this is an area that-
Can you give us an example of the state and federal grants under case management? What's that about?
Now, do you have a list of those?
This is, this is just our main choices. This is our time study money that we receive. And starting July of this year, they are cutting our funding by 15 percent, and they're gonna cut it again next year. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be losing our, some of our funding for that.
It's a cost shift, is what they call it.
So, so just like in our social service area-
Correct.
-they, they reimburse us for part of our labor costs. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's correct.
And, and now they're, in other words, it's partially grant-funded is what it really is. That's how we, that's how you could refer to it as.
Yeah.
But now you're saying those grants are gonna be reduced by 15 percent?
The main choices.
The main choices dollars are, from the time, from the time study program from the state are, are being reduced a percentage this year and another percentage next year.
But we have other funding from health plans that we contract with that either pay us per member per month or every 15-minute increment. So we have a variety of ways that we are reimbursed for those services.
Okay, so if the grant goes away, there's another source to make that up then?
Well, this, these are contracts with our state health plans. So if those contracts go away, then we would need to look at services and what we need to do with, with that reimbursement. So it's contracts with all the health plans. The Department of Human Services recognizes that public health and social services are the, are the way to provide the services to our communities, so.
Well, they, yeah, they provide, yeah, the, the ways to provide it, but they used to pay for it.
Yeah, and we still, we're still revenue over expenses in those areas. But, but there is the cost shift, is what they're saying from the state to the counties. That 15 percent cost shift is what they call it, so. Yeah.
So, so the, the cost shift goes to the counties, but the mandate stays there, that we have to provide the service.
Correct.
Thank you, state of Minnesota.
Yes. That's right.
Okay.
So, so far, we're still able to provide those services with revenue over our expenses. So in the expense column, you see just the payroll changes in 2017 to 2018. Net change is only $168,000, $144,000.
Now, that, that is, that's, that's the step portion, isn't it, Lori?
We don't, we don't have the coal in there yet.
That would not include coal.
No, it's just a step.
Yeah, just a step, okay.
And the expenses, you can see the various changes under our infrastructure, which was our 430, 50, 10, the revenue sources there. Now we have the expenditures, so we don't see significant changes except for under the insurance, $65,000 to $55,000 for 2018.
So the, going back up, we, we showed that we had the additional school nursing contract, and so that was the reason why we had $41,000 more in revenue. But we also then hired somebody to, we gave you the authority to hire somebody to do that work. So the expense, so is that in the $168,000 then?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because I was wondering where that would be. So that's not all payroll increases, it's, it's new wage too.
That's a new contract, yeah, with Holly. Holly was two days a week, and now it's full-time.
Right.
And we're still in the process of that hiring.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew where that $41,000 went on the expense side, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
You say you're still in the process of hiring, didn't we approve a step six last week or?
You did, and our first candidate with the school nurse experience decided she can't make the change for that salary. It'd be more on the upper end, which we cannot provide, so I didn't come back to request more.
Very good. That perfect example of the-
Yeah, it's the market.
The market issue with nursing. It's just, it's been a constant problem.
Yeah. So we're working on candidate number two, so. Family home visiting, that's the changes in our expenditures. We have some professional services. We will have one of our long-term Nurse Family Partnership Coordinator that will be retiring. So we will be required to train a new individually in mid next year. So we're putting some training expenditures for that. And again, our case management services, you can see as we talked about the reimbursement end, there is our case management expenditure end. So there really isn't a whole lot of changes in expenditures for the case management area. And we're still revenue over expenses in that area. Any questions on the revenue expenditures? The second page kind of gives you just some of the narrative of what we just talked about is our program impact from 2017 to 2018, where we talked about revenue sources, you know,
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brian.
And just for clarity, and they've really laid it out here very nicely, this is, this is easy to follow.
Thanks, Mary.
Just for, and I know you guys know this, but the total revenue up on top increased $178,000, and their expenses increased $184,000. So basically, it's a very flat budget from last year. It's $5,900 increase. But then when you go down to the summary, you'll see the difference of $746,000 to $751,000. And then we used $100,000 out of reserves to balance that out because of the inter, inter-fund transfer will be, the request will be $630,000 this year versus the 502 last year. So just wanted to point that out, that it's a pretty flat budget coming out of social services without the insurance and the cost of living increase.
Yeah, and that carryover, that $126,47 is from 2016.
2016.
So we just, we just put that number in there for now. Thank you for pointing that out. So any, do you want me to go through narrative or any other questions?
I think, I think you've done a nice job. Mary always do really good reports. Thank you.
She does. And she does great graphs, so.
Yeah. Pretty pictures.
Yes, just a snapshot of our funding sources, so.
All right, any other questions of the board members? Any more detail you would like?
I know.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a break scheduled now, so we can do that and then maybe-
Do our committee report.
Yeah, let's, why don't we do that? I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're gonna, we might be ahead, we can maybe let others know, but was this John Snyder gonna be here at, for the?
Did I?
Okay, so we're, all right, well, okay. Why don't we do our committee reports now then? Commissioner Haney, let's start with you today.
Well, I had, I thought I had a meeting on Thursday last week. And I came over here, I got a 10-minute notice on my cellphone that said, be over to a meeting for the campus improvement-
Oh.
...in 10 minutes. And I got over here and I saw Brian walking up the sidewalk, and I said, we got a meeting in, right now? And he said, yeah, we do. We came upstairs and we found out that the meeting was postponed.
I had a different-
Because Rhonda was on vacation.
Gotcha.
So, I guess I had that one. That doesn't count though, does it? And then I went to the MetroCog Technical Transportation Meeting the other day, and there were several things that were moved forward for approval by the Policy Board, which will meet this Thursday. And they were different projects around the metro area, 64th Avenue versus 52nd Avenue or 54th Avenue in Fargo Improvement and whatnot. And that was it, all I had.
Okay, Commissioner?
Thanks. Last week, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee where we are posting a Assistant Transportation Analyst, so that is being posted, and reviewed the audit. Everything looks clean there. And I talked about the pending UPWP. So all of that was recommended to the full board that will meet soon. I also attended the Southern Water Conservation District where there was some discussion, they were up at the Wild Rice the same day you were at that meeting, just, there's some pretty philosophical differences between how the different watersheds clearly are gonna go forward with the buffer. And they were kind of wanting some clear direction, and I don't know if they necessarily got that. Coming out of that, I think the SWCD has a pretty good plan going forward, and we'll meet with that Buffer Strip Subcommittee at the beginning of September as we work forward with ordinance language. So, pretty good update from them on that. And also, Abridger Mojo gave a conservation camp presentation, so did a good job there. And yesterday, I met Brenda Elmer, Councilwoman Elmer from the city of Moorhead, had requested that we meet to discuss a application that will come forward to the Planning Commission this evening in regards to the urban overlay districts that, if you recall, Commissioner Wayland and I were on that to talk about the tiers one and two. It sounds like the city of Moorhead would like to adjust some of the allowance in, in that in regards to this application as, as well as any future ones. So I wasn't able to see what the discussion was at their committee meeting last night, so we will see by tonight what- So we will see by tonight what became of that. And also had a meeting in regards to the Lake Fifteen land dispute issues. There are several different avenues that we're looking at in regards to possible infractions in site permits or shoreline violations, so more to come on that. That concludes my reports.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wayland?
Yeah, let's see, yeah, the Yellow Ribbon meeting last week and mainly just the discussions about things they've had going on and plans for this hall for some fundraising opportunities. I had an Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting last week. Staff updates and discussions about next year's budget were our main topics for that meeting. And let's see, oh, and yesterday Kevin and I met with a representative from the North Dakota Building Trades Unions about diversion issues and their support for the diversion. And obviously, it's gonna create a lot of jobs for people, so they're very supportive, and that was it for me.
Thank you.
At the Wild Rice Watershed Board last Wednesday, and there they reported that they got two million dollars for a whole set project. And they're building, they built two, two farm bikes, they've completed. Also about six hundred thousand dollars to build a water storage area. As Jenny referred to, the Soil and Water Conservation District was up there. They gave a good presentation on the buffer and they're trying to find out what the Wild Rice Watershed Board. They sort of gave them three options, you know, purchase the land, purchase an easement, they get easement or do nothing. And I think they went with option three pretty much right now, so it's pretty much where they're at. And also got a report that our representative Sharon Askison, who's our representative to the Watershed Board, is resigning from there, so we'll have to be looking for another person for the Wild Rice Watershed Board in this area.
What's the effective date of that, you know?
I think in a couple of months.
Do we pull from the prior applicants and contact them that there's an opening? I think we had three when.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, I do believe we are required to advertise for any filling of that. So they're certainly welcome to apply again.
Right, but we don't con, I'm sure they're aware, do we contact them?
Sure.
Uh, that was it.
All right, I, last week we had, we had a meeting of the Minnesota Members of the Diversion Authority and also our state legislatures. And we discussed just an update on where we stand with diversion issues and where we are. And there's a brochure that's been kind of put together that can be useful for legislatures to see what activities have been taking place. And we continue to work with the state legislature on that project. And then, you know, as Commissioner Wayland said yesterday, we were asked to meet with North Dakota Union Representative regarding the diversion project, and they're gonna become more active in support of the project, understanding that it's gonna be very good for jobs in our area as well. And so that's, we're gonna continue to get a little bit more out in the open in support of the project, so. That's all I have, I didn't have to meet these last week. Brian, you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Darren and I met in regard to some personnel issues and something that'll be coming forward, reference vacation payout, if there's a change of policy and how we handle that. You've already talked about the Minnesota diversion meeting with the state legislators in regards to that. I say Minnesota diversion, the diversion, but this was the Minnesota contingency. The board members from both Clay County and, and the City of Moorhead had a conference meeting called, meeting with a spyglass company, which is called, what they do is they come in and review the long-distance services and things, so I'll be visiting with Mark a little more about that. We spent quite a bit of time on public health budget and visited back and forth about that, Lori and I did. And Steve Larson, Juvenile Director, and I visited about the upcoming programs and budget concerns. And you received a kind of an update last week in regards to that. And now we're trying to find out how we can put together a funding mechanism. And we'll be talking with you folks about that as well fairly soon. The, we had a diversion administrative advisory meeting Friday morning. Just talked about a path forward there as we usually do. Commissioner Mojo talked about our meeting yesterday morning on the tier one and tier two with the, with the city. There was a lot of city officials and a lot of representatives from the county. Our Assistant County Attorney Jenny over there attended it along with Tim and Commissioner Mojo and myself. So we'll see where that goes. We had a, again, an extensive discussion about Lake Fifteen. I think we're getting to a point of at least charting a path of conclusion there. And, and it's, it's, it's really kind of complicated, it's been made very, very complicated. I do have a callback requested to our state representative now in regards to it. So reaching out to many different sources in regards to that. And the Minnesota Bonding Tour is tonight here.
Tonight?
Yeah, tonight.
I thought it was Wednesday.
No, the fifteenth, yeah. So that's at seven o'clock. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair. A lot of, lot of things, we finished up the, the parking lot in front of the, of the Family Service Center. And so that's open now, and they're working extensively in the northwest parking lot. And of course, you get the update on the two, the jail, the correctional facility and the law enforcement center. You're seeing a lot of progress right now on those two above ground, so things are going well.
So are we, are we still on schedule with this lot being complete here before school starts?
It, it's going to be very close, I'd say about three weeks, Mr. Chair.
When do you have to quit using the Robert Asp parking lot, is that next?
Well, I would assume that's real soon, that's why I asked the question, I want, because we're gonna, I noticed this morning there were still people walking.
Yeah, yeah, I parked over there myself, but yeah. If it does, it'll overlap maybe a week, depending upon how the weather works out. But we're, we've been in really good shape, the timing has really worked out well.
Very good. Anything? Okay, well, we'll go into, you know, unless, Brian, unless we wanna do that, we could do that.
Sure.
That sales tax collection thing now, if you wanna do that.
Oh, sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Yeah, what you have before you, and you had a copy of it in your packet, this is a, an agreement between the State of Minnesota, Department of Revenue and Clay County for them to collect the half-cent sales tax that we've been working on for the last year, year and a half. And what they do is they, they need a signature from us. And what Lori, we, our auditor and I have discussed this, and we felt that it would be good that the auditor is the county representative and then her backup would be her deputy auditor, Stacy. But I don't know, I'm assuming you had a chance to read through this. Again, this is just an agreement that allows them to collect the tax on our behalf. And then they do keep a small fee of that for their administrative services. So I guess what I'm asking for is a motion for Lori and her staff to represent the county in regards to the agreement. If that's agreeable to you.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, I need for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same, well, should, Brian, one, the, there was an issue that was brought up about business owners when they receive their information, it was, it was referred to as something else, is that being corrected?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair, it was being referred to as a transit tax.
Right, which is not.
Which is not, and I did contact two different people in Department of Revenue, and they have assured me that that has been sent out, I don't know if you, if the businesses have received the corrected one or not yet.
I don't believe so.
Okay, but they assured me that that was going to be sent out for correction. They said there, I think there was five of them in the state that were sent out incorrectly.
I asked SWCD if they had received any correspondence about the update, and they said they just had on Thursday.
Oh, they did?
So they got theirs, but maybe it's in waves. SWCD had gotten theirs, so I just asked.
Okay.
So it should be, it, it didn't affect anything as far as what they were collecting, it was, it was an informational error on their part. And so they are sending out a correction on it, so.
Very good, we'll, we'll take a recess here till, we'll get back at about ten minutes. All right, well, let's reconvene and we'll start with our, again, item number eight, which is the Budget Discussion 2017 Revenue Expense Report. And Brian and Lori.
Can you see it?
Yeah, you're fine.
It's up to you, Chair.
All right, good morning again, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, I feel abandoned.
There's two hot seats there.
Well, when you, when you show a thirteen per twelve, per point seven-nine percent increase, it's.
Trying to get anybody to.
Your seat is hot. Your seat is hot, so is ours.
Well, Mr. Chair, what I thought, and members of the, of the commission thought, we would start out, and I know you said you wanted another budget update on revenues and expenditures for 2017. So what you have before you to start out with is, I thought we'd spend just a little time on running over the, the expenditures to date on 2017. We'll just, we'll just run down it real quick, you're at fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent of the, of the year. And it looks like from the expense part, which is what we really concentrate, the revenues are on the left side, as I've said before, and the expenditure is on the right. As you can see, that court administration, we've talked about that before, it's, it's still there, it's, it's, we'll, we just, we need to budget. And you will talk about budget in a few minutes, but that needs almost double the budget next year than it had this last year. So we'll be talking about that. But everything else is pretty much in line as you follow down the percentages there. Planning and zoning, I think last time I told you that that was possibly that, that property that we had to bring up to quote. It's not, the, what the issue there was a seventy-five thousand dollar item on the floodplain remapping that you guys authorized several months ago. Tim asked me where that should go, and I told him to put it in the planning and zoning line items. So that's why he is running over on the budget expenditures there. And down in, you go about three-quarters of the way down, it says unanticipated expenditures. We did not budget, but you'll see about a ten thousand dollar expenditure there or possibly more. But that is where we put the tax appeal, yeah, in the, any taxes that, because Nancy does not budget for those tax appeals in her budget, and that has to come from somewhere. So that's where we placed that item. And then a lot of the appropriations, of course, are paid out at one time during the year. So now I'm going to the backside of that sheet that I handed out to you. If you look at highway, highway, there's one item that's at ninety-seven percent, that's unallocated. And that's where the bond payment came, comes out of, so that's a one, once a year. And then the others, I guess, are pretty much accounted for. The, the county building fund, there's, there's some other things that we've taken out of there this year. You approved the attorney carpeting upgrade there, and I can't remember what else is in there, but.
The two-hundred transfer out was in there.
Two-hundred and transfer.
That's why it's so high right now, because we did that.
You did the transfer.
Transfer to the jail.
Okay.
Instead of a day of the year.
Okay, that's where we put in that, yeah, very good. Okay, so any questions, everything is running pretty much as it should be for the year. Nobody's spending more than, than they've been allocated to spend, the way it looks, percentage-wise, so I think we're in pretty good shape in that field. And then I sent, I handed out a couple additional documents. One was the new requests, because we're going to be talking about the budget. We, and you, your one sheet that looks like this, there you go, it got new requests on the top of it. Corrections, and we haven't worked anything out. We wanna have discussion today about our direction of where we're going with the budget. We have not met with Julie, Lori and I have not. And we'll certainly work through that, see which are one-time costs, what is the offset to the, the reduction of prisoners going out of county. So we'll try to work some logic and some things out of there within the budget, and you can see that's a pretty healthy figure. Your out-of-county boarding is right in that, seven to eight hundred thousand dollars, just for the expense that we spend to other counties, let alone the transportation costs and the personnel costs and all of that. So we'll, we'll try to bring that together to some logic.
Well, isn't next year, aren't we, the candidate bring the prisoners in for sixty days even after it's ready, is that?
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, that's something that your chair has talked to me about, that we need to tie that down pretty tight. When, when you, when you heard a presentation from the jail on the, on the transition team, they feel they need a window of training opportunity on that, but they're working on a schedule, possibly running the two shifts and tightening that down too, so.
We had two months, that's what it's towards the end of, do we?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's gonna be cut considerably shorter than that. That's, that's certainly the goal on our part, we're encouraging that, to find better ways to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, you gotta understand that they, they do need to train in the new facility with all of the current locks and all that kind of stuff, so there is a component there, but six.
Two months.
Two months is just, it's too much, it's.
It seemed like a long time.
Yeah.
So we, Commissioner Gross, we agree with you, you're concerned about.
Okay.
The, the second item on the new request is, I can't say that you have approved it, because you haven't approved any of the budgets, although I know Steve was looking for a commitment from the counties prior to September first on contracts. And that is the eighty-three five, right now you pay for nine beds in the secure unit of the juvenile center, and he asked to go to ten, because your usage is up in Clay County. And that is the eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars was for the additional bed that he's asking you to buy. Our road and bridge, Dave was in, and his only request of an increase or a new request was a, a new copier machine for their facility out there of fifty-five hundred dollars. He feels purchasing is cheaper than leasing it, we talked about that when we had our discussion, because leasing would come out of professional services and things, but the one-time purchase then shows up here. And that is not a capital expenditure that goes into the Internal Service Fund, that's why it's a one-time purchase. Social services, I'm not sure, she's got some changes, but you'll see that it's a, it's a zero increase to her levy dollars. But she's listed it out for you there in, in new requests, but it's a zero. But, uh, she's, um, listed it out for you there in, in new requests, but it's a zero dollar increase. And, uh, juvenile detention, uh, you saw the eighty-three five in there. And then, he's got a movement of, of a half-time person, and he was converting some of the variable hours employees to, uh, a full-time position. And, uh, that, uh, he's showing that, there's some revenue that would move over from that. So, you're not seeing a lot of new requests in here. Probably the biggest one, of course, the, the jail. And like I said, we gotta work through that. Don't panic on the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase. I mean, that's a lot to panic about, you should. But, uh, we'll work through that and, and, uh, figure something out there of what that is. And, and Julie's well aware of that, that there's gonna be some melding there. And the eighty-three five is probably your, your biggest one in the juvenile facility. And you know what you did when our population has done this year. It's just absolute... So, and then, the other one that I passed...
Brian, can you have...
She had a quick question. The, uh, new partnership with Lakeland that we added for the mental health unit portion, is that in the new request?
You know, um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, it's not listed on the sheet, and it should be.
Okay.
We need to add that.
And then, we also need to discuss if it's gonna be a partnership between juvenile detention and social services of Julia, or however, we're gonna work that out. Because that was the discussion point, that it was gonna be peaceful to get there.
Spread between the two.
Have you come up with what you would look at it in terms of a...
Dollar?
A ration, a ratio, how much would be spent in the correctional facility versus the juvenile center?
No, Mr. Chair, we have not, we have not. We've talked, but we haven't tied it down, because we haven't got to that.
We need to nail that.
Cause that, um, that would also be reflective in Steve's budget too?
Yes, it, yes, it would. But also, there's some dollars such as...
That he's already expended.
That, that were already expended.
I mean, so we need to figure out how much is already being expended on that, because there will be a savings because of it being a full-time.
That's exactly right, yeah. But what we did do is Lori included the additional expense in your total budget, but it needs to show up on the...
It's over here.
Yes, it's over there. It's just not there. So, thank you for bringing that up. That, that should have been in there, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Continue.
Well, and then the third page that I handed out was something that I handed out when the first package came out in June, or the first part of July there. Um, and that is the fund balances, cause I know you're always interested in where the fund balances are at when we get down to the nitty-gritty and, and, uh, the spending and, and, uh, relying on some fund balances to do so. And we have not done any of that, uh, any of the corrections with the budget right now. What, I guess what, uh, the next step what we wanted to do, and I know, uh, we had a little bit of dialogue, um, in regards to the budget and where we're going with it. But I guess I would hope that we could have some dialogue today and give Lori and I some kind of overall direction of where you wanna be on, on, uh, levy dollars and things like that. Because right now, all you've seen is requests, and people have been in here. I mean, what have you had, fifteen presentations of budgets? And you haven't questioned anybody on the, the, the dollar amount that they're asking, just clarity on accuracy. And that's what we've been doing too, basically, is, is clarity on accuracy. And now, it's time to start putting the numbers together for, uh, what you wanna present to, or approve, I should say, and your maximum levy to present to the state. And, uh, as you go forward, what you wanna ask of your, your citizenry to, to increase your levy dollars. So...
One of, one of the things that, um, that I'd, I'd still like to see again is, Lori, would be the, uh, how we, how 2016 final ended up being. You know, cause, you know, we go on and we, we take our budgets and we can compare the current budget to the previous year's budget, but, and I, at some point, um...
Mr. Chair, that is in your bu- budget packet?
The pages three and four. Pages three and four in your, in your...
Yes, what?
That is, that'll show the year, the actuals.
Oh, okay. This from sixteen?
Two thousand sixteen, and that's my, the final numbers.
Yeah. Okay.
There might be a couple of changes there.
Okay, I'll look at, I'll, I'll look at that. Well, I, you know, I think that at some point, we, we need to, uh, September is gonna be rolling around here before too long.
Real quick.
And, and I think we need to, uh, give some sort of direction in terms of, uh, what level of percentage are we gonna be, uh, comfortable with? And, and then it's a matter of how we, how we, how and where we whittle that. And there's, you know, there's been some ideas and, and some issues about one-time costs. And I know we've sold some land, and I know Commissioner Mojo's maybe suggested something in regards to using some, so that, we need to be able to get, to have some of those discussions. And, um, but I, but I think what, what I, what I take you're asking for is, is where, where do you... You're asking us, where do you want it to be? Where, where do you want us to have this number be, uh, that we're more likely to accept as a preliminary budget number?
That's exactly right, Mr. Chair, because then, that gives us, I, I know we wanna look for as tight of a budget as we possibly can. But, then we have to look at what are the ti- you know, we're, we're gonna bring back to you the, the one-time costs, and, and if somebody has, i- if an account has a larger reserve than another, maybe we can make a suggestion to you as to what you can utilize of that in order to bring it down to where you're at. And, and then you'll, i- if the spending is just too high, you'll just tell us that, that the spending is too high.
Well, and I, and I hope you'll look too, cause when it, when it comes to the, um, to the building projects, the two major building projects that we're doing right now, we, we had a funding plan for that.
Yeah.
Up to a certain dollar amount. And during this process, we've seen some, since we started with that plan, and we were talking about fifty-three and a half million dollars was a number that we talked about being able to finance upfront. Well, we've had some considerable, uh, things happen to our advantage in terms of actual, what bids came in versus what we anticipated in that process. Uh, there's been some...
Additions too.
Some additions too, that have eaten away at some of that. But, my point being is, is, you know, in corrections right now, there is, uh, some considerable upfront costs that are associated with starting that facility. And, and how we could maybe look at incorporating those into a one-time thing and taking them out of the budget dollars and, and finding, you know, other sources for those, whether it's even, uh, actually part of the construction project. You know, we can still look at that as a possibility to, um, you know, there's a lot of options out there, I think, still, to, to look at. But, uh, I don't know if, uh, members wanna chime in in terms of the percentage.
I just have a question. Um, I haven't heard about the wind energy revenue for a while. Is that, what, has that been consistent? Is that...
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo. In fact, um, I think it was about three months ago or so, I, I did report on that figure, and I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right, so...
And, and then we do...
Granted, a little part of what we budgeted.
Yeah. We budget for a hundred and fifty, because there is some distribution to the township. I think it's an eighty-twenty split on that. So, uh, yeah, it's been, it's been right on target.
Good.
So, you're looking for a percentage here to shoot for?
Well, that's certainly, uh, helpful.
I think, you know, I'm comfortable with somewhere between three and four percent myself, so I, I think that's...
Comments?
I think that was kinda the avenue that we had requested last year. I guess, my, my comment is that I, I appreciate the majority of the departments that have come without increases asked. And I think it's easy to look here and see where the increases for the maj- the majority of the increases are in response to our building project, the staffing, that it would require the juvenile center, which I kind of view the problems with the jail numbers and juvenile kinda mirror each other, and then social services kinda mirrors with the out-of-home placement. And, and I think those are, I don't wanna say unavoidable costs, but those are costs that I think we should have been aware that we're gonna skyrocket. I don't think as many as they are. And maybe my comment would be, I know that we did have a funding plan in how we were gonna pay for the jail, obviously going into it. And, and I would just wonder if I, I know that we've added additional dollars to the levy every, every year in order to pay for it. And at what point should we say, those additional dollars that we've added into the levy, would that maybe be better suited to go into the staffing requirements that, that would be required? And then take the dollars that we've added into the levy, and then just take that out of, uh, out of reserves? And, I mean, it's, it's not something that we can obviously decide today, but I think that, that it's something maybe we should look at, because that is a, it, you know, an additional increase to the levy every single year. And, um, I don't know.
I, I, I think that's a, a valid point that's made there. I, I do think that, um, starting October, um, we're going to, uh, start to see what revenues come in in terms of the sales tax. That, that's not gonna be soon enough for us to really, um, deal with the 2018 budget, because there's not gonna be enough historical availability to us. Um, but the fact of the matter is, is, is those numbers can really have an impact. If they're considerably higher, then it would even justify more reason to start taking that, as Commissioner Mojo just stated, that those other dollars away, because it would still fit into our overall plan to pay off. You know, so...
Yeah.
But, uh, going back to the, uh, going back to the question, um, I certainly, um, I certainly would be in that area of, um, when he said three to four, I'm more interested in three, but...
Oh, I thought you said five.
No. It's, it's surprise, surprise, right? You know, and that's the one thing too, when we, we always talk about the, the new construction, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, is the new construction. We don't get to see a lot of those benefits from that for the first two years.
No.
You know, so, so, you know, um, we can say it buys down to fourteen point two eight, down to twelve point seven nine, but does it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when we're, when we're, we're not the recipients. Now, granted, some of the old stuff comes off, you know, and then, and we start seeing those benefits.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't know how we, you know, I, maybe Lori could come up with, what is the net, uh, difference between the new money having to pay out versus now the new stuff that we get to keep?
Right.
Right? So, that's the, the net amount is what we need to... But I, I would, uh, I would certainly, um, target for that, being down of that net three or something. It's still, three percent of twenty-some million dollars is still a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of money, so... Any other comments?
Well, I guess I just look at the budget sometimes when you do comparisons. And sometimes it's a small item, but, you know, like, you say you got equipment, five thousand dollars last year. Well, we're gonna maintain the same five thousand. I just can't see how, every year we spend five thousand on equipment, you know? It's just, do you need a copier every year, or do you need a... I mean, there's no reduction. There doesn't seem to be reductions in some of the items, you know? It's just, you know, we see the increases, so... Hopefully, they're, they're looking at doing some reductions. I mean, some of our consistent things in here are just, there's no reductions in them sometimes. And it's just, uh, are we gonna save any money anywhere? It's almost like, well, we spent five hundred last year. That must mean we need five hundred again this year. Is that all?
Well, I think, you know, I think, I think, I think part of that, and Lori, you can maybe jump into this too, I... Part of that has to do with the fact that they're internal service items, and, and we put so much money in each year to keep it consistent. And, so...
Yeah.
With the idea in mind, so then, when the next time something rolls around, we don't end up having to come up with a huge dollar amount in one year. That's the purpose of the internal service.
I mean, I just look at highway administration, you know? I mean, I'm not gonna pick on highway department now. I mean, but I see they put fifty-five hundred in there, you save for a copy machine. You know, did we save any money in the highway department? Could we transfer some funds around there that we could come up with five thousand dollars? Did we save anything on gas or anything like that during the year? That we came up with five thousand, that we don't have to add five thousand to the budget? You know? I'm not just using that as an example of what I'm trying to say. You know, did we save anything in any part of the budget that we could have moved around?
That's precisely why I asked the question, where I wanted to see, uh, the net result of 2016. Because we, it's nice to know, how did something end up? Did you end up with more revenues and expenditures than what you thought? You know, and then can some of those things be used rather than just build up a bank account and then start all over again?
Yeah.
You know, with, um, that, that's, those are some of the areas that need to be looked at.
Right.
You know, I'm sure Lori can, you know, come up with reasons for certain areas, but...
To that discussion, if you look at your new printout...
Okay.
There's actually an adjustment column. So, we've got the original proposed, that they proposed. And particularly in Roden Bridge, when you're talking about reductions, you can see in that adj- uh, adjustment column that we actually did go with, with, when Brian and I went through it with the department, and actually went through based on 2016 and previous numbers, and reduced some of those line items. So, and it, it actually shows right on your spreadsheet that there's a reduction.
Okay. I mean, I'm not trying to pick on Roden.
No.
No, but that's, that's what we did with every department. So, if we made any adjustments based on, on prior year's actuals, you can see those numbers in there.
And, and frankly, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, you're, you're absolutely right. Um, there's, there's always room for something. Or you can do without something for a year or two if you have to, I mean, if you need to. But, uh, yeah, that exercise, when we did go through it, as we stated, we've spent a lot of hours on the budget already. And what we're going through is mostly just for accuracy, to see what they've spent, what are they planning on spending on it? And, you know, in government, sometimes, a lot of times, we look for consistency. We want it to be a fairly level increase. We don't want those spikes. In other words, like a fifty-five hundred dollar copy one year. We'd almost rather that they'd lease it so that it was an even payout each year, because that's, that's what people wanna see. They don't wanna see spikes. But, but just as a, as a, kind of a summary on that, and we'll certainly make every attempt at that three to four range. But, um, you do have a, a two and a half percent cost of living in there. The insurance is five hundred thousand dollars that we've placed in there. The, uh, two-year tax abatement that we've talked about, there's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in there for that.
I'm working on the updated number. I haven't gotten the spreadsheet from Sidde yet. So, I mean, hopefully, it should remain about the same, cause some will go off and...
Some will go off and on. Mm-hmm. But four hundred and eighty is a, is a big chunk of money for that abatement. And we've been doing that out of reserves. But, that's in your budget packet right now.
Some of that comes back on.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. And, um, uh, what was the other thing? Oh, the other thing is, we've been talking about it all year long, our prisoner count is up greatly. Our juvenile, uh, center is busting at the seams, and our out-of-home placements have been. And it's really tough for us to control the costs of that. Um, and, and, uh, one of the big, big numbers is personnel. And, uh, sometimes they require more personnel too, so...
I, I can, I can also tell you that, um, I've heard some, from some of the people that I represent, that their budgets are really tough too.
Oh, I'm sure.
You know?
Yeah.
And it's, and it's, we gotta, we gotta keep that in mind, that they're the ones paying the bill.
Absolutely.
When do we hear on the health insurance cost?
It's supposed to be... Yeah, that's coming up, the end of this month.
A week or two?
Yeah. Well, um, you know, I, you just, even at three percent, you're, you know, it's a, it's an extra million dollars to operate the county in a given year. That's a lot of money. Well, I, you know, I don't know, I think you're kinda getting any, some sort of an idea of at least target to try to do.
Sure.
So... Well, we're here, we're, we're here, just constantly bring it back to us. We've gotta keep talking about this, because we're, our preliminary levy is next month.
Yeah. Coming quick.
Need to set it. And, once we set that, uh, I've never seen us change it.
(laughing) Well, you know, a lot of work goes into it before you set it. So, hopefully, it's pretty accurate for that time, so...
All right. Well, thank you, um, Brian, and thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you've got an idea of...
Yeah.
Okay. And we're glad to, uh, I'm glad to sit down with you two on, anytime you wanna work on it. Uh, okay, so our next, our next item here, we've been jumping around a little bit. Our next item is the ten thirty-five item, which we're right on time for. And that is the tax forfeiture, um, of property. Am I see Nancy's here? Nancy? which we're right on time for, and that is the tax forfeiture um of property. Am I see Nancy's here? Nancy? Good morning.
Mr. Gardner?
You can.
Have a chair here. Renee.
Good morning. All right, Nancy, you on the side?
Um as you can see by the memo that I sent out, uh Mr. Gardner here would like to repurchase a piece of tax forfeit property that's in the Downer area. Last year it was up for forfeiture and he did sign a repayment program. And then um the two thousand sixteen taxes didn't get paid, so it went back into the foreclosure this year. We went out there to change the locks and discovered that as in this photo here, you can see the main floor has fallen into the basement.
Exactly.
Um it's in quite a state of disrepair. Mr. Gardner has also sent a letter to you regarding his situation. The criteria to be used for the repurchases on here, is it best interest of the county or is it a hardship for Mr. Gardner to lose his property?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In terms of the legal analysis, the statute, the statute uh instructs that the county board has to find one or the other. Either has to find an undue hardship or injustice that would support the repurchase or that um permitting the repurchase will promote the use of the lands that would best serve public interest. So it's a or, uh one or the other that the board must find in order to allow repurchase. Additionally, um I would suggest consideration of um repayment of the entire purchase price uh in order to allow the repurchase of the forfeiture that's also provided for by statute. If there's good cause to believe that an installment payment plan would be unnecessary or not in public interest, that the board could require the entire repurchase price. Um and that would just be based on last year's history of um intending to repurchase and then not completing that, so.
And he is um prepared to pay the full delinquent amounts and the other
Correct.
things on Friday.
Okay.
The largest.
I'd like to eventually tear it down as soon as possible and level it off. And eventually make put a garage and apartment house on there, even though a house on top of the garage. Eventually for my kids, it's just got out of hand. It was a greenhouse. We converted everything to a greenhouse and a gift shop. And it, as you can see in the pictures, it just, it shut down what, after I got divorced five years ago. And it just depleted, it just.
This would this would qualify as a blighted property and.
I'm sure it would. The largest, the largest question in my mind would be in terms of public interest, best interest. How does the um the condition of the property factor into that? Is it in the best interest of the public to allow the repurchase? Uh or is it in the interest of the best, is it in the best interest of the public to have county intervention to uh remove or correct the blighted conditions at this point?
That's the board's wishes. Cause there's there's three people at, three properties that have the same water well on there.
My uncle's on the one side of me and my parents or my mother now is on the other side of me. And we're all connected to the same water well. That's on this property. And that's one reason why I'd like to keep it so nobody has to go through, you know, trying to get a well and stuff going. If I have to just leave it black dirt, you know, so be it, you know, and then you know, my mother, like I say, is on the one side of me, you know, and then if she decides to sell the property, combine them because it's only a hundred and fifty feet by a hundred feet. It's not a very big piece of property, you know.
We approved this last year, didn't we, when you said the repurchase?
It's a different one.
Oh, it's a different one?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, what's the magic about, because if you repaid the taxes before now? I mean, you're saying you're going, by Friday, you can do it.
Right.
What's the magic about Friday? Why wasn't it done before? Couldn't be.
Because I couldn't, I couldn't afford it. I got divorced. I've been struggling ever since and trying to keep the place I'm living at now, pay child support, and with my job, the way it is, it's a seasonal job. And it's been a bad job or a bad year, last five years. It's just, I've been struggling. I finally went out and got a another job to supplement this other income I got coming in.
Well, I I um I I I always think it's in the best interest to try to get it back to, you know, to keep it paying taxes. But I I do have, my concern here, and I don't know how we can address it, um is it's it's just the way it looks. It's a matter of time before we're gonna, we're gonna start hearing from others.
Before it falls in, I mean.
Right, and it can become a hazard that.
Right, I understand that because, I mean, it got water in there because it's got just the crawl space. And floor floor joists has got rotten and it just collapsed. I mean, I can tear it down myself or see what it costs to have a contractor come in and do it.
Just a, uh just a question, are are we allowed to, you know, obviously, we come up, we have to come up with one of these two criterias, but can we put extra conditions on something like this or is that, I I.
Yeah.
You know, the fact that it's abladed, it it's a concern of the county.
Sure. Um I didn't find authority to put conditions on the repurchase, but the statute was silent on that, so um I think we could consider that.
I I I know it's your intention to tear it down, but I, you know, is it going to be one year, is it going to be six years, ten years?
Well, within a year is, you know, you know, I mean, if I gotta try to get the whole of the Barnesville Fire Department, see if they got a control burn to get started on it, you know.
Sometimes they can, sometimes they can do training on that type of thing.
Right, and there's two buildings fairly close to it, and it'd be kind of a good thing if, you know, I can get a control burn. Otherwise, I gotta, you know, probably talk to my neighbor down the street. He's got a loader and stuff, you know, and demolish it and haul it out of there for me.
I do know that uh the city or the Sabin Fire Department has done that for some of my neighbors when they've had other things go on, that they, it's a good training opportunity for them to burn things. I I understand that this um would be a hardship for your family because of the location of the well specifically. Uh my concern is the same as Commissioner Campbell is, how how long will it be in this? Uh there's currently a couple other properties that I receive weekly calls on, not yours, but because it's in similar. Um I would like to see this um at least torn down before the end of the year personally. That's some.
Within six months?
I think that gives you some time to kind of arrange, maybe with fire departments or whatever you needed to do or just to tear it down. So personally, I I guess I'll I'll make a motion to approve your request to purchase with the understanding that the the um payment will be uh no later than this Friday.
And torn down, are you gonna say?
I'd like, yeah, I'll say it by January first, torn down.
Okay, so there is a condition that we're attaching to that besides the payment on Friday. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? And um do you think you can meet with those conditions?
I sure will.
All right, very good. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Our eleven forty-five item is communication regarding the plan to purchase one hundred and fifty acres in Goose Prairie Township for future donations to the DNR. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair and members of the Clay County Commission, thanks for having us. I'm John Schneider, manager of conservation programs for Ducks Unlimited in Minnesota. I live in Alexandria. This is Don Schultz with the Minnesota DNR. He's the area wildlife manager in uh Burgess Falls, right?
That's correct.
And what counties do you cover again?
Clay, Wilkin, and Otter Tail Counties.
So um Ducks Unlimited is a national nonprofit conservation organization. We have about forty-five thousand members in Minnesota. Um our mission is wetlands conservation and restoration. In November two thousand and eight, the voters of Minnesota passed the Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment. And one of the things that that was funded with that is the Outdoor Heritage Fund, which funds uh the restoration, enhancement, and protection of prairies, wetlands, forests, and other habitats. And every year, uh the legislature appropriates about a hundred million dollars for those activities. Ducks Unlimited has been um fortunate to receive a few appropriations from the Outdoor Heritage Fund. And one of the things we do is we buy land from willing sellers um very strategically. Uh tracts of land that are adjacent to or very close to existing state wildlife management areas that can be restored back to wetlands and prairie for wildlife. And we've been doing this work. We've purchased about thirty tracts of land throughout the state so far. Uh and we're proposing uh and planning to purchase a hundred and fifty-one acres in Goose Prairie Township uh adjacent to the Goose Prairie State Wildlife Management Area from um the Dahl Estate. That was, has been for sale for about six months now, um and has been listed. This property is strategically important for both the Minnesota DNR from a habitat restoration perspective. As you can see from the maps attached, there's, the parcel is dotted with intact, partially drained, and fully drained wetlands that can be restored. But but moreover, it adjoins the Goose Prairie State Wildlife Area um and gives DNR uh riparian flowage rights on a portion of Goose Prairie Marsh itself that they need to do water level management control out there in conjunction with the Wild Rice River Watershed District. Uh there's a very preliminary conceptual plan to do some water level manipulations that would both improve the aquatic ecology of Goose Prairie Marsh, but would also create some seasonal water storage in that area uh that would benefit uh the Red River Valley. And I I don't want to make it sound like there's a a plan there yet. There's a conceptual idea, I think.
Yeah, it's got some preliminary plans and uh that's, this is, this parcel of land has some property within the hundred-year flood that we would need in order to move forward with the project. And I should say that Kevin Rude, the manager from the watershed district, is here as well, so. Uh but as John said, it's an important parcel for the, for us. It'd be open to public hunting, become part of the wildlife management area. And we work closely with DU and other conservation organizations on these land acquisitions to make sure it's something that's important for our wildlife management system, system, and something that we want, that meets the criteria that that we set for properties that we want to own. Uh and this parcel certainly meets that. Not only that, provides the nesting cover, the wetland restorations that John mentioned, that'll also provide some flood, you know, hold, store some water on the property and have some flood control benefits. But also, it's, it could be part of our bigger project that we're talking about here with the watershed district trying to seasonally hold some water, you know, during flood condition times on the basin itself and then release it back and allowing us to manage the shallow lake itself to more benefit wildlife as well. We can draw water levels down give us the capability to do that so we can promote the growth of aquatic vegetation. It's uh makes good habitat for waterfall and other water associated wildlife, so. We're real excited about working with DU to get this property and uh we're looking forward to it uh moving ahead.
So this then would qualify for the uh payment of little taxes, right, for pill payments?
Yep, pill payments.
Okay, Commissioner Gross.
When you're talking about flood, so how would you get the water there? Where would the water be coming from?
Um the water would come in from the watershed of the of the landscape around Goose Prairie Marsh. So it it has a catch, catchment area and I I don't know.
There's actually a public drainage system that goes through the area that comes from the south, so there's a pretty big drainage system. It's part of a public drainage system that comes through the Goose Prairie Marsh and then exits on the north side.
I know that uh many of the watersheds had signed on to the Basin Commission's approach to a twenty percent flow reduction or twenty percent reduction, and I'm assuming then that uh from the Wild Rice perspective, this is one of the ways to help get to that level, that twenty percent reduction.
That is correct.
Okay.
We'll gain about nine hundred feet of gated storage plus there'll be additional storage in the spring.
Well, that's that's good to hear. That's, those are, that does, that does help the entire valley when you do something like that, so. Yeah, come on, come on, come on up or go to the microphone there, whatever you prefer.
I just want to add that the watershed at their last board meeting did sign a grant agreement with Lissard Sands. Uh we received six hundred thousand dollars to go towards the Goose Prairie project. And so now the board did initiate a project, so we're in the process of making it formal now, and then we'll get to the final design. So the acquisition of this property will help us by reducing our costs to do the project because that'll be less land that we'll have to get flow adjustments on, so.
That's an area that you would have had to require anyway, that.
Yes.
For that.
Yep, yep. I think it's about thirty acres or so that we need an easement on out of this property.
Yeah.
So it works out good for us.
And Mr. Chair, I would add too that in addition to that large amount of flood storage, restoring all the drained wetlands on this property and the prairie will further mitigate runoff down down into the valley. It'll have some additional temporary storage in those restored basins and and the runoff cue factor from the cropland uh will be reduced um once it's seeded back to native prairie.
Well, that certainly is encouraging to hear that there's more storage to slow water down. I think that's a good thing, so.
And the other, the other big advantage for the Goose Prairie Township is, is that portion of the road we have to raise. That'll be part of our control structure, and that's been a problem area for Goose Prairie for many years. So by doing this, we're going to reduce the township costs to repair those roads and hopefully take it off so they don't have to have FEMA come back and help them with that either, so.
Very good. Commissioner Marshall?
Well, somebody who grew up duck hunting up there, I am excited to hear that there's going to be more public lands available for that. But also, I think it really helps uh with the flood land uh issues and if we're going to be able to store some extra water. But specifically want to note that the pill payment, estimated pill payment is more than the current taxes that we have been receiving on this parcel. And that's probably a question Commissioner Gross and I will get, but uh I'm excited about this venture.
I guess I would have to say the same thing. I mean, that we're always concerned about land going out of, going to the government agency or Ducks Unlimited or whatever the case may be, you know, but as long as these pill payments, as long as Minnesota State keeps allowing these pill payments, we're going to be okay with that, you know. Once those pill payments, uh they decide not to do that, then all of a sudden, I don't know, who's going to pay the taxes on it? Is Ducks Unlimited going to pay the taxes or?
If pill payments disappear, I think you'll have every single county in the state insignificant. But I think you'd have a lot of lobbying.
Well, wouldn't be the first time we've seen a reduction something.
I guess I have a question now. At this point in time, uh it's been a number of years since I've been up in that area, but uh is that in, looking at the area here, is it grass right now? It's not being farmed.
Uh Mr. Chair, Commissioner, no, it's it's being farmed right now.
Oh, it is?
It is, yes. It's uh, it's all in row crop production.
And so then would would your plan include a controlled burn then? And then uh reseeding with prairie plants?
We would, our plan, and we haven't gotten this far yet, uh just yet, is first, we have to see what herbicides have been applied this year. We can't restore prairie into areas with herbicides that have long carryover. So we may have to do a cover crop or round up ready soybeans next year. But then we would seed right into the the stubble or the prepared field probably in the fall of either this next spring, if the herbicides will allow, and if not, um the fall of twenty eighteen. And uh we would move in and restore wetlands right away as well.
Okay. And so it'd be similar to the WPAs up there when you're done with it?
Yes, it would uh, it would have grass and wildflowers and wetlands and wildlife, yeah.
Although I did have concern about pill payments and stuff like that, I am both for this. support of this program going ahead, moving ahead, hopefully it goes through, Liam.
Super, thank you.
I guess you don't need a resolution or a motion or anything, you're just informing us?
No, we, I think you.
No, we don't.
Well, we don't need an action, okay.
No, Mr. Chair, I should have said that at the outset, I'm here, this is just for an informational courtesy visit, we try and communicate with the counties.
You can sell people whatever you want to.
Pardon me?
You can buy and turn around and.
We can't, but we are required to notify the county, and my approach is to actually come and have a conversation with the county beforehand as often as I can, just to ensure collaboration and good communication.
Well, this is a, this is definitely a, a good project, especially when I start to hear about it, it also deals with the reduction in flows to the river, so it's good.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I think that was the last item, our committee reports are done, so if we have nothing else, we will be adjourned.